Welcome everyone to our Board of Education meeting of the Liza Board of Education. Mr. Kennedy, please read the opening statement and take the role.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a combined regular agenda and business meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on September 16th, 2022. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this, that copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. We'd want to welcome everyone present here at Elizabeth High School Frank J. Sicarel Academy and to our television viewers through the September 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is the meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education Permanent Record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate speaking when talking becomes personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant; request an individual to leave the meeting when the person does not observe reasonable decorum; request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting; call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. We also ask that you silence the sound of your electronic devices. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, we may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must personally sign in prior to the start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. I'll take the role. Alcady Hernandez. Barbosa.
Here.
Carvalho.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Oh.
Dorjely.
Can you hear?
Dorjely.
Here.
Jacobs.
Present.
Naron.
Here.
Goncalves Bustana.
Here.
Marina Ortega.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Before we begin, please rise for a moment of silence. Ronald Matlos, retired Vice Principal, Woodrow Wilson School Number 19. Elsie Anderson, retired Supervisor of Home Economics. Michaela Santos, former student Victor Marab, School Number 21. Theodore E. Farah, retired Director of Plant and Property Equipment and former Second Ward, Liza City Councilman. Now, please remain standing for the plate of aliens and a star-spangled banner.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand the quicker voice. They're here, kids.
Please remain standing for the platform lesions. Board member Diane Barbosa, can you please leave us in the platform lesions?
She's not here.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which they stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the star-spangled banner by Francis Kapke.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars throw the perilous fight For the ramparts we walked were so gallantly streaming And rocket red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Oh, say...
Okay. Board member Stan Naron, please leave us in the platform etiquette.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I would treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Carrie, come! Ready, set! Order! Come! Ready, set! Line! Base! Carrie! Come! Ready, set! Forward! March!
Now, we will read some resolutions. Board member Stan Naron, can you please read this resolution?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Board of Education Resolution, whereas Ronald Matlos, born October 30th, 1947, grew up in Elizabeth, New Jersey, where he attended St. Hedwig's Elementary and Theodore Roosevelt Junior High School before graduating from Thomas A. Edison Vocational and Technical School in 1965. And whereas Ronald Matlos continued his education and received his bachelor's degree at Arkansas State University in 1970, and eventually his master's from Kane College, now Kane University, in 1981. And whereas Ronald Matlos began his long career in education at the Elizabeth Public Schools in September of 1970, mathematics skills as a mathematics teacher at Thomas A. Edison Vocational and Technical High School. And whereas during his professional years from 1971 to 76, in addition to providing students valuable mathematics skills and knowledge, Ronald Matlos honorably served in the U.S. Army Reserve, attending the rank of medic. And whereas Ronald Matlos also instructed students on the rules of the road as driver education instructor for over 20 years, providing them with vital information that allowed them to assume greater responsibility and autonomy, as well as to expand their world and boundaries through the operation of a motor vehicle. And whereas Ronald Matlos impacted and extended beyond the classroom as an assistant baseball coach for Elizabeth High School and head coach for the Thomas A. Edison Vocational and Technical High School. Drawing from his experiences as an all-state high school and collegiate baseball player and from various coaching clinics he attended, to instilling his players with baseball skills and character skills during his decorated baseball journey that led him to the Union County Baseball Hall of Fame. And whereas Ronald Matlos eventually served as an assistant house director at the schools formerly known as Johnny Dwyer House and Admiral William F. Halsey Junior House of the Elizabeth High School Complex, and vice principal of the Woodrow Wilson School Number 19, where he helped to ensure the smooth operation of daily activities in a warm compassionate learning environment where students had the best opportunity to attain their goals. Whereas Ronald Matlos would retire in December of 2010 after a celebrated career of 40 years of devoted service to the Elizabeth Public Schools, demonstrating great determination throughout a career that inspired countless students and athletes to enjoy future success and achieve their dreams. And whereas the Elizabeth Board of Education and the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community were saddened to learn of Ronald Matlos's recent passing and expressed their sympathies and heartfelt sorrow to his family, friends, and loved ones and all the students he impacted. Now therefore, be it resolved that the pride, devotion, and determination which Ronald Matlos lived each day of his life and served the students of the Elizabeth community serve as an inspiration to us all. Be it therefore resolved that this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the Elizabeth Board of Education and a copy of this resolution be presented to his family on this day, September 22nd, 2022. May he rest in peace and may his legacy live on. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Board member Stephanie, can you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas Elsie R. Anderson, born on October 30th, 1946, in Brooklyn, New York, eventually moved to Summit, New Jersey, where she attended Summit Public Schools and graduated from Summit High School in 1964. And whereas Elsie R. Anderson continued her education at Mansfield State College, now Mansfield University, where she received her bachelor's degree in 1968, and later at Kane College, now Kane University, where she received her master's degree in 1978. And whereas Elsie R. Anderson began her career at the Elizabeth Public Schools in September of 1971 as a sixth-grade home economics teacher at George Washington School Number One. And whereas her years of teaching, she taught students during the school day and members of the Elizabeth community in the evenings home management skills such as cooking and sewing. And whereas Elsie R. Anderson further applied her expertise in home economics as a coordinator and director, roles in which she took on the responsibility for developing the home economics curriculum and attending countless conferences and workshops to stay apprised of the latest methods, trends, and innovations. And whereas throughout her career, Elsie R. Anderson had earned praise for the excellent home economics program she helped maintain as well as the respect and the admiration of her staff and fellow coordinators. And whereas Elsie R. Anderson eventually was appointed Supervisor of Special Services Instruction, for which she helped ensure that our district's students with special needs were receiving the services necessary to experience a high-quality and rewarding education that prepared them for a successful adult life. And whereas after Elsie R. Anderson retired in September of 2001, she continued to pursue her passions of quilting, needlework, and crafting. And whereas throughout her 30 years of distinguished service, Elsie R. Anderson provided valuable life skills to countless students and community members that undoubtedly helped them to be successful, independent adults. And whereas the Elizabeth Board of Education and the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community were saddened to learn of Elsie R. Anderson's recent passing and expressed their sympathy and heartfelt sorrow to her family, her friends, and her loved ones. And now therefore be it resolved that the joy, the passion, and the purpose in which Elsie R. Anderson lived each day of her life and served the students of the Elizabeth community serve as an inspiration to us all. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education and a copy of the resolution be presented to her family, September 22, 2022. Our deepest condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Board Member Maria. Can you please read this resolution?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Whereas Theodore E. Farah, born August 4th, 1928, grew up in Elizabeth, New Jersey, where he was instilled with the values and acquired skills and knowledge that would lead to a lifetime of service to his community and country. Whereas Theodore E. Farah honorably served his country in both the United States Army and Air Force during the Korean War. Whereas Theodore E. Farah would later turn his attention to serve closer to home, beginning his long career at Elizabeth Public Schools in August 1970 as the supervisor of janitors overseeing the custodial staff to ensure that the district was provided clean, safe school environment for students to learn and succeed. Whereas Theodore E. Farah began his career with Elizabeth Public Schools while already serving the Greater Elizabeth community in another significant capacity as a member of the City of Elizabeth Council, representing the residents of the Second Ward. Whereas Theodore E. Farah eventually was appointed Director of Plant and Property and Equipment, a role that he served with great integrity for nearly 25 years. Whereas during Theodore E. Farah's tenure as Director of Plant, Property, and Equipment, he served as the project coordinator of perhaps the largest single-site capital project in the history of the Elizabeth Public Schools overseeing the construction and opening of the main complex of the Elizabeth High School, which included the site formerly known as Johnny Dwyer House and the Admiral F. Halsey Junior House, currently Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy and Admiral W. F. Halsey Junior Health and Public Safety Academy, as well as the current Thomas G. Dunn Sports Center and B. Peter Gold Administration Building. Whereas the main has served as an academic and community hub, especially for the countless students who have graduated and achieved college, career, and life success since it was opened in 1977. Whereas Theodore E. Farah retired January 1997, almost 27 years of devoted service to Elizabeth Public Schools, demonstrating great dedication to the service of his hometown and Elizabeth community. Whereas the Elizabeth Board of Education and Elizabeth Public School Professional Learning Community were saddened to learn of Theodore's recent passing and expressed their sympathy and heartfelt sorrow to the family, friends, and loved ones. Therefore, be it resolved that the love, purpose, and devotion which Theodore E. Farah lived each day of his life and served both the Elizabeth Public Schools and the Greater Elizabeth community serve as inspiration to us all. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread on the official minutes of the Board of Education and a copy of this resolution be presented to his family.
Thank you, Commissioner Carvalho. At this time, I will turn to our General Counsel, Jonathan Williams, for a statement. And after the statement, I will open the public participation. Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, members of the Elizabeth School community. I wanted to give a brief update on the status of negotiations for a new contract with the Elizabeth Education Association. At the beginning of the week, the parties, the association and the district participated in a mediation before a state mediator at Perk. There were presentations by both sides, and the result of that mediation was for the association to convey an additional offer. The district and its professionals, including our accountants, took a look at that offer and examined the district's ability to fund what was being asked for. Today at 11:30 this morning, on behalf of the district, I conveyed a counteroffer to the state mediator with the request that that counteroffer be reviewed and forwarded to the NJEA and the EEA. And we recognize that they're going to have to take a look at that. It's a very, in my view, legitimate offer made in good faith, which provides funding and additional compensation for our teachers. And we are hoping they'll take a good, hard look at it and that it will result in a settlement. We shall await a response from the EEA. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Kennedy, please read the public participation statement.
At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the Board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant; request an individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum; request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting; call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. Our first sign-in is Christina Marrera from Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Christina, in the middle, please. Good evening.
I'm sorry. My apologies, but I cannot hear anything that Christina is saying at this moment.
One moment, please. IT, can you please check? Can you set up the time? Ms. Moreira.
Yes.
Give us one second. I want to set up again your time.
Sure, take all the time you need. I got all day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can you set up again the time, the three minutes? Thank you. Ms. Moreira, you can stop.
Okay. So, my name is Christina Marrera. I am a mother of two children in our district. I'm also the president of Elizabeth Parents and Students Care, and I'm here today because I was here a few months ago to report on the $67,000 that this district, you all approved for Mr. Flom, the special education attorney, to pay for him to take me to court. We are currently up to almost $90,000 as per the bills that I got from Mr. Kennedy. So you are spending and approving for your district to use taxpayer dollars to take me to court because my son needs to be evaluated and get services to help him be a successful student in school, and you are refusing to do that. Now, I know that there are many parents in this district that are facing the same type of issue that I am. I know my issue is directly politically connected because of my advocacy and who I am, but I'm not going anywhere. But I do know that all of the other parents that face the same issue, okay, don't have equity. You guys sit up there and you talk about equity, and yet our special education students don't have the same advantages that our regular education students do. I have asked them many times for you to audit the special education department, and yet nothing happens. And then you don't want people to come up here and tell you that you don't care. Well, it's very hard to do that when I have to sit there in a room with your lawyer debating me about whether or not my son needs to be evaluated when he's struggling in school. You've spent almost $90,000, and we are nowhere, okay? I don't know how you can sit up there and do nothing. Do nothing. And we still don't have a CPAC, okay? Parents have nowhere to go to express their concerns, yet we have a special education committee. I don't know what you guys do. Go out to dinner? I don't know, because you're not servicing the parents of special education students that are in this district. So we're still waiting for that. The other issue that I wanted to address is the lack of a contract for our teachers. Elizabeth Parents and Students Care is here to support them in their efforts to secure a contract. We have children who are not getting special education teachers. They're not getting interventionists. They're not getting social studies teachers. They're not getting biology teachers. Our kids are sitting in classrooms. Our kids are sitting in classrooms and not being educated, okay? So let's try to keep the ones that we have and maybe entice others to come here because we're losing them all to Newark, Patterson, Roselle, anywhere else but here.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moreira. Next speaker, please.
Leonardo Caramazza from the EEA.
All right. Hello. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, this is our first year back to a normal beginning of school. Parents are excitedly entering the building, visiting the rooms where their children are learning, connecting to a missing part of their community, the Elizabeth Education Association. School faculty and staff are working their hardest to ensure the success of students despite not having a contract. Why are members without a contract? The Board's attorneys refuse to acknowledge the economic impact of the pandemic and the current state of the economy. As a result, they offer a raise that is simply not enough. Firstly, inflation is affecting the wages of every employee in the district. The inflation rate for August 2022 is 8.3%, compared to August 2021 at 5.4% and August 2020 at 1.3%. In fact, the Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates citing persistent inflation. It was just raised by three-quarters of a point, impacting everything from mortgages and credit cards to student and car loans. Credit card rates are the highest since 1996, mortgage rates are at their highest since 2008, and auto loans are at their highest since 2012. In direct response to the economic impact of the pandemic, the United States government has allocated over $4 trillion in stimulus. This has led to things we have all seen firsthand, like the economic impact payment and advanced child tax credit. For the district, federal aid has increased roughly $62 million from 2021 to 2022. As far as state aid, the New Jersey Department of Education website states, "The core purpose of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund is to provide direct money to school districts." In Elizabeth, state aid has increased nearly $40 million. A pattern emergence. The pandemic caused economic hardship, and in response, public entities funnel funds into the community. It just seems that in this case, the Board has regained that the EEA is part of the community. The EEA has been an institution in this community for over 100 years. All support staff and many teachers live in the city. As for the members who don't live in the city, their taxes contribute to state funds, which contribute to nearly 85% of the district's budget. So in the face of all these economic hardships, and with the Board of Education in a position to help thanks to additional funding, it offers a raise that can be described as normal at best. This is not just my opinion, as our last raise was 3% over three years. Please keep in mind, that was pre-pandemic. In the last year alone, the district has increased this budget by 17%. Yet the district's median teacher salary is substantially less than what is being offered by other large districts. East Orange School District's median salary is $97,279. Edison Township Public School median salary is $94,855. Jersey City Public Schools median salary is $92,330. That is a difference of $9,845, $7,451, and $4,0894 respectively. More importantly, Elizabeth Public Schools' maximum salary lags behind other large urban districts. North offers $100,550, and Jersey City offers $103,280 for maximum salaries with a bachelor's degree. Elizabeth offers $91,150. It is no wonder our resignation rates have skyrocketed.
Next speaker, please.
Anne Earring from the EEA.
Good evening. My name is Anne Earring. I'm a language arts teacher at School 19. I'd like to address the district's staffing issues. Buildings are short-staffed. This is especially true in neighborhood schools, which never are a priority for the district. My own building is currently missing a vice principal, a third-grade teacher, a middle school social studies teacher, an art teacher, an ESL teacher, both of those two, which we have not had in two years running. Last school year, my middle school students never had a certified special education teacher in the classroom. They were not provided the services stated in their IEPs, a legal document that mandates accommodations be made, and students were not provided with special services. Here we are, a new school year, and already we're scrambling to cover classes. The substitute company cannot fill the need properly. The subs that do show up are ill-equipped to offer professional academic support in the classrooms. Most have their phones out all day. ESL, bilingual, special ed, library, gym, art, and music teachers are having their classes canceled so they can cover other classes. Do you not value these teachers and their subjects? When specials classes are canceled, teachers lose prep periods. This occurs daily, weekly, repeatedly. When do you expect teachers to plan? Planning includes lessons, assignments, assessments, and more. Teachers do not want the misprep money. They want time to breathe, time to use the bathroom, make a phone call, create lesson plans, make copies, attend PLCs, grade papers and assignments, speak with colleagues, and get a much-deserved break from constant contact with students. The district job fairs did not recruit the numbers needed to fill the district's open positions. Retirement and resignations are at an all-time high, and more letters of resignation are submitted each week. People do not find it appealing to work here. I equate us to jumping off of a sinking ship. Newark hired over 600 new staff members this summer alone. Patterson is now offering a $7,500 sign-on bonus. When will the Elizabeth Board of Ed start to respect the staff and treat them with respect? When will the contract be settled? Our pay scale is not in line with other large urban districts. Inflation is up, morale is down. You sing the praise of the educational system here in Elizabeth, you do all your photo ops. You need to remember, staff is what makes this district great.
Thank you.
Nick Nicoletta for the EEA.
Good evening, everyone. It is unfortunate the games and the tactics that your representatives keep playing in this negotiation process. We were on the mediation meeting the other night till after 9:00 p.m., with all the decision-makers from your side present, but yet that night, for some reason, they cannot make a decision. Then just so happens today, you come back with an offer, so you have a soundbite for tonight's meeting. Yes, I'm here to tell you, we just received it a few hours ago, and we requested additional information, and we'll be reviewing it. Let me tell you, these type of tactics are not fooling anyone. I would like you, I would think you would want to settle the contract and get it off your plate and deal with all the other issues that my other officers have brought up, and I'm sure the community is going to bring up. I'm going to switch gears. I'm going to read you something directly from Dr. Miguel Cardona, the Secretary of Education. With the economy the way it is, people have options, but also, it'd be short-sighted for me to talk about this without acknowledging that we have a teacher-respect issue in this country, too. That if we are not seriously about paying teachers a competitive salary, improving working conditions, and including student and teacher voices and decisions that are being made, you know the profession will lack the amount of people that it needs to get the quality applicants that it needs to have. Sound familiar? And once again, that was from Secretary Cardona. I have another letter that I'm going to read from somebody else. This is from a former student and Elizabeth School District employee. Hello, my name is David, a former student, and as of June 28th, a former employee of Elizabeth Public Schools. I graduated top of my class 10 years ago from Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy. In the five years since graduating from grad school, I've been a proud member of the Elizabeth Public Schools. I have served in many committees, sponsored several programs throughout the years. That's enough about me, he wrote. I want to talk to you about it, my former teachers and colleagues. Teaching has never been easy. However, nothing can be compared to what these past two years have been for educators around the globe. The pandemic has tested each one of us more than one way. Name it, stress, anxiety, plain, simple burnout. After surviving the most challenging part of everyone's profession career, teachers in Elizabeth won't be able to get the rest this year. Instead, they will have to deal with anxiety and fear, trying to figure out how to keep up with inflation while their paychecks remain the same or go down. As many other districts are offering incentives to retain and hire members, Elizabeth has decided to freeze teachers' main source of income. But don't worry, David says, given me a raise, I already found a district that appreciates their staff, their staff members, and not only had matched my salary, but gave me more and put me on a higher step. Hopefully, this letter touches on people's hearts.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person, please.
John Griffin from the EEA.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to believe that every one of you became Board members because you wanted to make Elizabeth Schools better for our children. Your children are our children, so it only makes sense. But things have gotten so bad that our members have literally taken to the sidewalks with signs to ask for respect and a new contract. Nothing like this has happened in Elizabeth since 1987. First, teachers are still resigning in droves, and those numbers are only increasing. If things continue the way they have been, the number of resignations is going to eclipse last year's. And who's going to feel the impact the most? Our students will. More children will be in crowded classrooms, more children will not receive services, and more students will fall behind. Teacher resignations last year were 219% higher than in 2020, and this year, they're 50% higher than last year. And here's a scary fact. In all of 2020, 21 teachers resigned. The exact same amount resigned in just this July. The teachers leaving aren't leaving the profession, they're just leaving Elizabeth. They can't deal with the nonsense, the impossible workloads, the ingratitude, the lack of respect, and the lack of a new contract. And if you don't do something soon to make this a better place to work with better pay, the long-term consequences will be devastating. Next, and we've said it before, you do not have a funding problem, you have an allocation problem. You've received over $150 million in federal-state funding since 2020. You can use it to settle contracts, and money can be moved around in the budget. You have more than $10 million sitting in unassigned funds right now, and you could pay us what we're worth. Stop spending tens of million dollars on programs, which rarely stick around. Programs don't teach children, we do. Do you have any idea what a slap in the face it is to members that you can spend millions on tracks, fieldhouses, gym floors, and sod while our salaries are frozen? 4,000 of your employees and my members are taking home less money than last year enduring financial hardships. Stop telling us how much you value us when you haven't paid us a dime, excuse me, more than last year, but you can spend $700,000 on sod? Are we worth less than dirt now? I believe that every Board member, or at least almost every Board member, wants the EEA's members to be happy and have a new contract. But we don't, and the process of completing that work is going to take longer than necessary unless your team returns to the table now. We're in mediation for salaries only, but they refuse to meet with us and address pending proposals, not even their own. We should be meeting to address those while mediation continues. That way, when we reach a number we can all live with, the ratification process can begin immediately. Send them back to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, next speaker, please.
I'm pissed. And I'm not just angry that so many things in our district is keep, it's just continuously going under the rug. But when it comes to, before I continue what I'm going to say, I just want to let our teachers know, we love you, we appreciate you, and we value you. I had to squeeze that in, because I'm going to get pissed off, because we have reasons to. When it comes to those directly impacted in our everyday classrooms that are not exempt from being, you know, subjected to racist encounters or dehumanization, what we did with, you know, a former principal who's now in district office now, who's overseeing federally-funded programs now, who got reinstated, I'm sure because the mayor made a call and said, "Listen, I need you to reinstate this lady because her husband's my fire chief down at City Hall," because that's how it works here in Elizabeth, is I put the call in as the white man in chief, and then I'll let you know what I want to get done, and you must obey by it. But recently, another issue happened when Oga had parents attend this meeting three separate days in a row, and they were made promises, and they have not even received a deliverance yet or a remedy to those promises. I have a question, Oga, on how you are remedying pain, trauma, and suffering in our school district. You're not. Nobody should say to a parent, and I quote, "I don't have to answer to black thugs or black street people." I got a problem with that. Because once again, after Yvonne McGovern, who was a principal, calls her black students as staff monkeys, and we move her next to Oga's office, we have somebody else who says to black people, "Well, I don't answer to black thugs or street people." I just want to let all our black young queens and kings know, in our classrooms and in this audience, that when they tell you, "You're not good enough," you tell them, "Not only am I good enough, but I'm more than enough." When they say, "Send them back home," meaning to Africa, you tell them, "Not only am I home, but my people are the foundation of what we call home." Now is not the time to remain silent on issues that matter. Find your passion, pursue it persistently, relentlessly, fearlessly, and boldly, and By any means necessary, abolish racism, abolish white supremacy, and I call for Oga's resignation.
Thank you. Kayson, next speaker, please.
Who could ever be louder than Salam? I'm going to keep it down, though. Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry, one moment. Mr. Kayson, can you please sit down? Thank you, we appreciate.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Salam Ismail, Director of the National United Youth Council Incorporated. And first and foremost, I hope that you guys settle the teacher's strike, because we need our teachers, for sure. I mean, what did I say, the teacher's strike? I haven't seen that since the '80s.
'87, baby.
That's right. However, I'm deeply concerned of what I've been hearing and seeing, now on TV, Facebook, or what have you, with our children that are from our district. Couple weeks ago, there was an incident that happened at the Plainfield-Elisabeth football game. My son happened to be assistant coach at Plainfield. He called me up and said, "There's a fight going on." And I said, "With who? Plainfield-Elisabeth?" He said, "No, there's kids fighting in Stan," and those are Elizabeth children. Then just the other day, I saw something I haven't seen ever in my city, where I seen kids just losing their mind, beating up on each other, and one being unconscious, two went to the hospital. Now, I don't know, something strange going on with our children is at that level. And one thing we cannot do is separate ourselves from our children. Our Board of Education, community leaders, faith-based, business, politicians, all, we all are responsible for them. I'm not into the blame game. I take full responsibility for those actions, because we have continued to not do enough to satisfy those angered children that are ours. So as I submitted to you guys in the email, there's a few things I'd like to see happen. First and foremost, I'm going to be putting together a meeting with all parties involved. Hopefully, Kayson would join that meeting, with the police, with community leaders, faith-based, and others. We're going to sit down and talk about this problem, because today, or that day was kicking and punching, tomorrow there may be shooting. And we, our people on the ground is the one that deals with that. Even when you guys say, "Oh, well, it's just not a school problem," it is. It's all our problems, it's a city problem, and we also need to take heed and take responsibility in that. We're willing to take our part, you guys got to be willing to do your part. I want you all to take heed of the information I sent to you via email, and I'll be talking more- more about this. And the last time I've been here, Kayson, we was having a youth summit, and we haven't had one since, and that's been like maybe four or five years. Hopefully, we can do that again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Laporte from Elizabeth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, I am here on behalf of the students and in support of our football team. Recently, there have been multiple incidents in which have left our team condemned by the actions of others. Our team's first game was met with seven-set fights, and last weekend's game was met again by more violence of the audience, leaving an innocent child in critical condition. We must do better to not only protect and help our team, but also not to punish them for actions of the public. We ask you to restore game time as it was. Condemning them from actions not their own is wrong. They are not thugs, but students learning and progressing immensely. We cannot hold insurrections and actions of the public upon the team. Increasing security and protections is the correct action. Changing their time and checking them is not the correct action. They earned their right, they worked their butts off for the ability to play and attain a better future. Fighting through pandemics and other processions, fighting through pandemics and other processions set to hold them back. They are talented students whose futures are bound to your hands. Instead, we must condemn all other parties. Fighting is not an alternative, it is an act of fault, of control, a simple-minded action of imbeciles. If they cannot control themselves, they must remove themselves. Athletes losing scholarships and more because of actions of the public is a fault. My call to action is always the same, and unity is power. Pull ethics and moral to the forefront, it's bound. We can and must do better. Back the team and back their future.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Next speaker, please.
Quajir Birch from Elizabeth. Quajir Birch.
Not here.
Maurice Wilkinson from Elizabeth.
Um, I'm gonna make this brief, and I want to hear, thank you for my comment, because I didn't see everybody else speak. Y'all been on y'all phones. You, Oga, you got a smirk on your face like this is a game. This ain't no game. Y'all coming to the neighborhoods, y'all want support, y'all want to get in position. Y'all ain't done nothing but a dis- Hold on, hold on, hold on. Well, I appreciate the applause, hold on. Y'all ain't done nothing but a disservice, disservice to the teachers, disservice to the safety of these students, and a disservice to the parents. It's time for a change. We gonna get all y'all out positioned and put in people that actually give a damn about these students. Give a damn about these teachers, 'cause I'm tired of hearing that, y'all letting people in the building. I'm tired of seeing kids getting beat up at y'all football games. I'm tired of the teachers being disrespected. Y'all don't know what that do to the people. And for y'all to be black men and y'all silent on this issue, y'all should be ashamed of yourself. That's why they always talking about it's the lack of black men, and y'all supposed to be examples. We are the examples, we lead by example. Y'all just being quiet. Y'all have the authority to make change, y'all do absolutely nothing, except what they tell y'all to do, being prostitutes to this political system with the pimp right there. No, I'm sorry, she a prostitute too, 'cause we know she work for the mayor, right? So we gonna get this right. I don't want to hear no more talking, I just want to see action. If y'all can't deliver, get up, walk out the door, we'll show y'all what it is to effectively govern from the local level all the way to the education level. I'm done.
Stacy Gregg.
I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Dozierly. I would like to respond to that. I think that it's highly inappropriate to come and speak to my black brothers as such. And I understand that that was a black brother who was speaking, and if that's the case, it's okay to come and speak to all of us and respond to us as such, but to become and be disrespectful to us sitting here on this dais is inappropriate. As a black individual, we need to stop coming against each other and become one and work together. So I'm not gonna allow you to speak to Stan or Jerry as such. We sit here and we do as much as we can to help the community. You don't know what we have to go through, you don't know the hoops that we have to jump through to address certain things. So for you to come here and do that, please don't do that. I'm not going to allow you to say that.
First of all, I am a black man.
And you're not going to respond as I'm speaking as well either. You're not going to respond, you're going to allow me to speak. So please do not do that. Please do not come and disrespect them. Please do not come and disrespect us. Some of the stuff that you may say is true, but some of the stuff is not true. And I'm tired of everyone coming to speak to us in a manner that is disrespectful. You think that we're being disrespectful? And I've heard comments before, you're saying we value, we appreciate, we love the teachers. You don't think that this nine of us do the same, that we don't value the teachers, that we don't appreciate the teachers, and we don't love the teachers? We do. We do. And there's a way that we, excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam President, but there's a way that we have to be able to conduct ourselves as board members. Now, I was not going to speak, and I was not going to say what I needed to say, but what the last person said, that's one of the things that some of, and people who came before us, who are black individuals, have done before. They split the black community up, and they think that they could come here and speak to us as such, and that is disrespectful, and I'm not going to allow you to continue to do that. You want to speak to us, set up a meeting, and the three of us will meet with you, and we will speak with you, and we will tell you what we tried to do and what we will continue to try to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Kennedy.
Stacy Gregg.
I'm gonna make it brief because...
Excuse me, excuse me.
There's no yielding the mic.
Excuse me.
No, his time is up.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Kennedy, you can give him my email address, and then I will set up a meeting with him as well. That's fine. I don't know, I didn't hear whatever he was saying, but you can give him my email address, and I would be glad to set up a meeting with him, myself and Jerry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that was very disappointing to have the only person responded to was to the person who's not in the room to read the room. I don't think there's any division of the black community happening from the last speaker who spoke. He was speaking truth. You didn't like the way his example of, you know, prostitute, I do get that, but you don't have the right to insult him, like just what happened, without letting him have a response and reclaiming his time. But then again, the lawyer here doesn't seem to follow those rules of protecting the public. I've had runs with him before, I've come to Elizabeth to support the people of Elizabeth. I'm a special needs mother. With COVID, I hope the parents here have gotten their letters. Everyone from grade kindergarten on up is entitled to another year of special ed without having to hire a lawyer, so make sure the special ed people do know that. The governor signed a bill that each child, because of the 18 months they lost of special ed education, they're entitled to it. So I sure hope the special ed person and the superintendent who has a special needs child and shares that publicly at every opportunity she gets is sending out those letters for the special needs parents. It was sad, I want to support the special needs mother who is having to fight to get an evaluation for her child, I like to, which is disgraceful. Give the child the evaluation. How do you do your job without giving those evaluations? You know the children can't get other services without having it done, and the district has the funds for that. I support the teachers. I feel horrible for the football, the children who are out there giving it their all to have to be penalized. The things that I hear coming from this district about racism, in particular from the superintendent's husband online, other incidences, I'm sick of hearing about the superintendent receiving a bonus every year, getting higher and higher amounts of money for her salary, up and above $200,000 at this point. I may be wrong, correct me, but I know you won't answer a question, but the teachers, I'm just gonna go with 200. The teachers not getting their money that they're entitled to is shameful, just shameful, and it's a play of big brother watching over and somebody skimming the pot of the money because there's money in there from COVID and everything else. Pay your teachers well. Pay them as you would pay yourself. Fight for the special needs children. Do your best, or get out, resign already. The racism in this town and this particular school system has got to stop. The name-calling, the lawsuits, the intimidation, the intimidation of policemen here when you walk in is unnecessary. We've had, I'd like to know who asked for that? Was it the lawyer?
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Jonathan Yelverton from Linden.
This whole administration, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You're not worth the paper that they print your taxes on, all of you. This football team, you need to know that your coach is a racist, okay? Nobody greets a parent that they don't know by calling them a black thug. I'm so sick of hearing about this. Then you take your former principal and you rehire her next to your office, Oga, doing these backdoor dealings. Oh yeah, I know what it's about. And then this coon gets on the monitor here and try to chastise one of my brothers about what he said. What he said was exactly true. She's the one who are separating black people by making statements like that. Who is she to tell us and wag her finger at us and tell us that we need to sit down? We need more black brothers like this brother and like myself and like Brother Kayson. That's what's missing. And just like this young lady said, your salary gets higher and higher and higher, and you ignore these teachers who are teaching these children and working hard every day to come in. What do you expect from them? That's why you're losing so many teachers, because you don't respect them. You don't give a damn about them. Shameful. The syndrome is called the complexion for the protection for the connection. That's what's happening here, and everybody knows it. Your husband, the things that he has said online about black people, you don't think we see that? How can you sleep at night next to that man? Oh, that's why you're just like him. That is the disease that keeps all of this stuff going. That is the disease that keeps all...
Ah, that's it. We are not, that's it. I, may I speak?
Please have some respect, we have a room filled with children.
No.
Please have some respect, we have a room filled with children.
Excuse me.
Oh, Madam President, Madam President.
Please have some respect, we have a room filled with children.
Madam President.
Excuse me, may I speak?
Madam President, to the public out there...
Sir, we have a room filled with children.
Listen, 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 listen. Nobody is denying anybody...
We are not tolerating someone to disrespect and then not follow the policy.
We have a room filled with children.
Okay.
Please have some respect.
Let's get something in the way to hear.
We have a room filled with children.
At this time, the president requests five-minute break. You don't follow the policy?
We have a room filled with children. Please have some respect.
I call for a motion to take five minutes break, Mr. Kennedy. I will call for a motion to take five minutes break. Thank you.
We have a room filled with children.
I make a motion to go into private.
I second that motion.
I make a motion to go into private.
Please have some respect.
Diane, make a motion for go to the closed section, Mr. Kennedy. Take a robocall, thank you.
Please have some respect, we have a room filled with children. I ask you all to please have some respect, we have a room filled with children.
Excuse me, may I speak? May I speak? Thank you. Now...
Madam President.
Excuse me, one moment, Commissioner Nero. Before I open the microphone, excuse me. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you. Now... Okay, excuse me. Thank you, may I speak? Thank you. Now, before, Commissioner Nero, one moment, please. Before I pass the microphone to our Commissioner Nero, I want to explain to the public and our students, parents, guardians, teachers, and public right here, why the president requests a motion to stop. First, it's not only Eliza Public School Board Association, it's every board in New Jersey and across the state who need to set up a policy for public speaking. When somebody do respect, I need, as a president, stop. I didn't say I will not give you the opportunity to speak. After everybody stop, and always, we need to be respect. I deserve respect, my students deserve respect, we deserve respect, and our community. And we cannot be here every meeting in the same situation. We cannot fight between each other. We are community, and we can be respectfully disagree and agree with that. I don't argue with the union, and I speak with the union. I don't argue with the student, and I speak with the student. Just please, let's get together, show respect for each other, because at the end of the day, we older than our student, and we need to leave as a sample. I want every member in the community know, anyone who don't respect and follow the policy, I need to stop the microphone. That not mean I say you are not allowed to speak. That's mean, this is my, you know, I want to show respect for you, who take the time, and everyone right here deserves respect. Now, our Commissioner Nero want to speak, and Stan, it's your time to speak. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Now, I invite you to, in a friendly, a nice, and polite way, we take and talk. Mr. Commissioner Nero, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So first of all, what you just witnessed, I want to apologize to the students that are there. I don't believe the students deserve that type of disrespect that they just witnessed because that is not the way we govern ourselves as adults or leaders that elected in this community. The response, the lack of response that you're getting is because, you know, we're not gonna get in a public dispute and a back-and-forth in public about things we disagree on. So to the students, the football team, and all the young people here, and everybody in attendance, just want to apologize for what you just witnessed because this is not the type of forum that we're trying to create. As our president just stated, there is a very clear policy that you're not to defame anyone's character when speaking in public or addressing the board or anybody in the public. So alike, the board would not disrespect the audience. In turn, we don't tolerate the disrespect either, and that's why the interruption did take place. In regards to the comments about myself and Jerry and Charlene, you know, being black folks who sit on... folks who sit on this board and not responding to the racism and things going on in this district, you know, clearly, anybody sitting in this room, you don't know who we are if you believe that. And if you don't know who we are, I would suggest that you do your research to understand the amount of work and the work that we've laid out here in this district, in this community, and the lifelong work and the lifelong residence that we've been in this community. So I don't react to stuff like that, I'm not going to be reactionary or get upset or get out of, bent out of shape, but I'm not going to tolerate the disrespect. And to Charlene who could not be here but is here virtually, thank you for speaking out and speaking up on things that are clearly incorrect and not correct. And the other facts that were stated, there were so many facts that were stated here tonight that are just incorrect and that if anybody has any issues with any of the things that you heard, please do your research to get the actual facts before you come up here and spew a bunch of lies and say things that are not just. Because if the things that people are saying were actually true, we would not be sitting up here, none of us.
Thank you.
You know, because it would be unjust, it would be unruly and we would be doing the community a disservice and our children a disservice. My child goes to school here in this district, we've had relatives that go to school in this district and, you know, we have Mr. Salam Ismail sitting in the audience who is a witness of the work that we've done here in this community with young people, right, Salam? In saving thousands and thousands of lives of young people over the years, no matter what the race, no matter what the character, no matter what the gender, we have stood for children, we have stood for who they are to make sure that they could become productive citizens. Yes, we came up here because we believed, we came up here because we wanted to get things done, but there's process, there is systems. And I think there's a lot of smokescreens when people come up here and think that things can be done like instant coffee and things can just happen overnight or, you know, decisions to just be made on a whim or a simple conversation or a simple promise. There's a lot of red tape that has to take place and unfortunately, we are in a situation where we are negotiating teachers' contracts and we're trying to get it done. We want it done and I can assure you, every single administration wants it done, every single school principal, your superintendent, everybody wants it done. We'll get through it, you know, we just have to work together to get through it, but we're going to get it done and we're going to get to the finish line and we're going to make sure that it's just. But we must do this in a civil way. For the football team, we want to make sure that we protect you and nobody gets killed, nobody gets injured and that your lives are spared. I don't think anybody wants to punish you, anybody's looking to punish you. As a matter of fact, we celebrate you, we salute you and we're there to support you because we've been there when the melee has broke out and it's been a very unsafe environment and we're not going to tolerate it and we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that it stops. So I just want you to be clear and understand who we are, what we're about and what we stand for and we stand for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neron. Okay. At this, one moment, Mr. Kennedy?
There's still some public speakers.
You have two more speakers?
A few more, yes.
Okay, next speaker.
Nicole Harris.
One moment, please. Can you please check?
Hello? Okay. Yes, this is my first time doing this and my daughter, I'm addressing this black sneakers. My daughter was sent to school on Friday, the first day of school. There was no issue with her sneakers. So the second day, she went on Monday, there was an issue that she said that they couldn't wear them. So the principal told me, I can take a black marker and go over the sprinklers with them or I can tape them up. I paid $200 for my daughter's black sneakers. First of all, black sneakers are high in demand, hard to come by. We got the hospitals wearing them, we got the security guards wearing them, they're just high in demand. So we're trying to get sneakers at the last minute, it was a big issue. So they told me that, oh, I went up to the Board of Education and I asked to speak to Olga, but I know I couldn't speak to you, it's Olga. So they sent out a lady named Judy Finch. So I said to her, I told her what was just said to me and my daughter, that was very humiliating, that I couldn't believe that he told me to mark my daughter's sneakers. And so when I said to her, well, who can I speak to besides, since you can't come out? I spoke to her, she told me, well, there's nothing to be done, there's nothing to be done. I said, so who can I speak to that's higher than you? Can you give me a number? I don't have a number, Google it. So I said, okay. So I went home, my daughter, she didn't even want to go back to school. So my thing is this, the black sneakers are high in demand, everybody's trying to get them. We have an issue with school seven also with the shoes. But the issue that I'm saying is that we got other things that we should be looking for. We got kids hanging theyself, we had kids that go home without eating for the whole weekend and we worrying about some shoes out here? You know, I mean, our kids don't pay for anything, we pay for it. I'm a, I'm a single parent, so and my daughter is very, she's embarrassed, she's, I mean, she's, you know, she's embarrassed like and for someone that she looks higher power to look up to, asks us what are we going through? Ask us, ask me, can you help me? You know, don't just, just tell my daughter, you can't come to school with those, put the black tape on it, that's not the way you handle this. You know, I, I mean, I think my problem is small, but no problem is too small. These kids, my cousin hung his out, we didn't even know what was going on. So this is a little problem, so just address the little things also. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Kennedy, next speaker.
Maria Zee.
Good evening, everyone. Let me explain something to you. You may see, Maria. You may see a white person here, but I'm not white. My family is from Africa and I'm proud. I have black grandchildren, black sisters and brothers and I've adopted and I'm so proud that they're black. And I tell my grandson, be careful because of your color with the cops, with anybody, because your color, they always blame. Now, what I'm about to tell you, I'm so embarrassed, but I'm just tired of hearing it. Olga, don't protect my family. All the stuff that you seen about her husband making those racial comments was not him. It was my cousin that hacked into her husband's account. No, I'm not lying. It's the truth. And I'm going against the legal right and I'm going against my family. Her husband did not do that. And I'm just tired of her family getting blamed for it and you should never protected me at all. I may not have family, I don't care because my family can't stand me anyway because I have black children, but I'm proud. Now let me tell you about these football. They're good players. They should not be punished of what other people are doing out there. Because honestly, my grandson plays for the football team. And once again, they weren't the ones fighting, they were playing a sport that they look up to. They get hurt, they play with heart, they should not be blamed for what people are doing at McDonald's. Respect them. Give them back what was taken from them because it's not fair. And Olga, for my family, I'm sorry that your family went through it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sebastian Cardenas from Elizabeth.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and Commissioners. I am here to advocate for keeping Friday night games as opposed to changing them to Saturday noon games. As a result of the pandemic, we were deprived from the opportunity of having a normal high school experience. From getting to meet others in a, in being in a more receptive hands on learning environment, we were forced to change our normal routine. Adapting to Zoom calls, technical issues, home environments, especially those who had multiple siblings to take care of, were all factors that students had to adjust to in a very short span of time. However, the one thing a high school athlete would have never expected to change was sports and those who were able to attend them. My junior and sophomore year consisted of heavy restrictions on those who can watch my game. I understand at the time, these restrictions were in place for safety measures, however, coming into my senior year, it feels only fair that I should be able to have the opportunity to experience a normal football game. This is my final year alongside my senior teammates as an Elizabeth football player and I couldn't be happier to be on the field with them. I've been longing for Friday night games when I was an eighth grader, freshman, sophomore and junior and my only chances have been stripped from me and my teammates. Coming into school year, teachers and principals assured me that everything would turn to normal. This is not normal. I'm aware that there have been various violent encounters at my previous football games, however, changing games to Saturday will not stop Prime in Elizabeth because it bleeds and runs in our town and unfortunately, our school grounds. But there are other alternatives that can be implemented to correct these behaviors. One of these solutions I'd like to attempt to bring to the table is a vouching system in which the players can choose who specifically to invite, which will monitor, which be a monitored list. That way, you will be able to hold them accountable easier as you know who to let in. My teammates, thank you. My teammates are here today fighting this situation as strong as how we fight on the field. We're here to support each other in this uncomfortable event. Please be considerate of my team situation as we are only kids who are trying to make the best out of a difficult situation. Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Commissioners.
Clarence Sears from Elizabeth.
Hi, how you doing? I'm Clarence Sears. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our head football coach, Coach Fury, and I'm also an ex-football player, I played for him as well. I've known Coach Fury for about 15 years now and ever since I've known this man, he's been a true role model to me. He's giving me the steps that I need to be successful in life. As a player and as a youngin', when I was in high school, playing for Coach Fury, his first year, we lost some games and we won some games, we went to the state championship, we lost. Second year, we went undefeated to the state championship game, lost again on the last play of the game, we went undefeated. Third year, my senior year, we went undefeated again and we won that state championship game in double overtime. Ever since I met Coach Fury, he's always been giving me the blueprint of how to get further in life and how to go about doing things. The racist accusations that I'm hearing against him is absurd. I remember being in high school, just like my guys over here, young, knucklehead, I came home after one practice, we got evicted, I had all my stuff out on the side, I called Coach Fury in tears, he said, don't worry about it, I'll find somewhere with you. Within the next couple of weeks, he was able to do some stuff with residency where I was able to still live in Montclair and finish out my senior season. He also got me a full ride scholarship to Long Island University where I was able to get my bachelor's degree. And also, with that being said, I graduated in 2017 with a bachelor's in communications and also towards the end of this year, due to Coach Fury talking to me again, I'm looking to go back to start my journey on getting my masters as well. Coach Fury is literally one of the most selfless people I've ever met. Anytime I call him, he's always there, what do you need? What's going on? What's the problem? He's always looking to help. Ever since I was a teenager until the young man that I am today, standing here in front of you at 29 years old. I literally have one story I don't like telling people because I try to leave that in the past, but I'll share it here with you. When I was a senior, I was having a bad day and I had got into an altercation with somebody at school and I went home and I brought back a weapon to school. And Coach Fury caught me before I did something stupid and talked to me and changed my whole life and that's just the kind of guy he is. If he was a racist, he would have let me throw away my life right then and there, he wouldn't have cared. He stepped up, he kept me on the right track and even with the kids that we deal today in the group chat, it was one morning, we didn't have enough sandwiches to feed the kids. Coach Fury said, hey, coaches, if you can, I'm going to reach in my pocket and pull out some extra money, let's get the kids McDonald's. I don't want them to be hungry going into the scrimmage and that's just the kind of guy he is, very selfless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joshua Pennick.
Good evening, my name is Joshua. My name is Joshua Pennick. I'm one of the 10 senior captains on the football team and I'm sure all y'all, deep down in y'all hearts, y'all really care about us, but I feel as though as a senior captain, we being punished for something that happened off of field grounds. First game, playing field, multiple fights happened, senior captains, everybody on the team, coaches, y'all administrators, senior cheerleaders up there, we all reached out on social media, made it known that y'all gave us a warning, one more fight, one more incident, our game was done. Community took it upon themselves to actually listen to us and they made sure nothing really happened at the game. After the game, an incident happened at McDonald's and sadly, we got news that the kid died. Deep down in our hearts, we really care about the child, but as a kid growing up, Friday night license is something we really cared about. Senior night is something we really prayed for. Watching my brother right here, Nas, play on senior night and walk down the field made me want to do it. Like, oh wow, my brother grew up, now I'm praying for my moment to come. And I feel like now that y'all took it away from us, my grandmother, rest in peace, what am I playing for? My goal is to walk down senior night with my brothers and my parents to say I made it, to say I finally did something that they couldn't do. And now that y'all took it away from us, I feel like I don't got a purpose now. So I pray that y'all take the things I'm saying to our consideration and if not, give us all our home games, at least give us senior night. Y'all could do what y'all want about the audience, but we believe senior night is that one thing we want. It's not just about the name, it's about the presence, about why we playing. I feel like, I feel like as a administrator, y'all should really just think about the things, like I know y'all had meetings about games and everything, but think about us. We really know, we can't control the community as to what they doing. Years before us, before we even touched seniors, it been fights every year at football games. So why now blame it on us for what they're doing? Take it back to the 80s, fights happened at McDonald's. I feel like the government and the city should take control of McDonald's having more security guards, not us. So I just hope y'all take what I'm saying to my teammates in consideration and just give us back, if not every Friday night, just senior night, something we've really been praying for. Thank you and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Gerald Baker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerald Baker. I'm here to speak on behalf of my head football coach. I knew what happened and has come to my understanding that the information is misleading. That man has made a big impact on my life and I believe I can speak for my brothers when I say that coach is trying to help us grow as young men and give us opportunities in life. Football or not, he wants us to achieve in life and trying, and trying his hardest to get us into colleges and I'm proud, I'm proud to call that man my head coach. And for those who are really in the room when that incident happened, we really know what happened. Thank you.
Leonard Ramigla?
Hello?
Hello. My name is Lawrence Ramigio. I'm currently enrolled at Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy. I am a senior captain of the football team, and I'm here to talk on behalf of my head football coach. Ever since the first day, I met my first, since I met the new football coach, I felt nothing but love. Coming off an injury, he made me feel loved, and the game, the football, the game of football that I judged the love of over and over again, he's made me, me and my football teammates feel that love again. Never has he, has he made me once feel like I was an outcast or someone that I wasn't. He's always had my back and made me feel loved. This coach has made us believe that we can do whatever we want. He has done more for me and my teammates than any other coach I can remember. From buying helmets to having fundraisers, he makes his team feel like a family, like a home, like a safe haven where we can all come together and play the sport we love. Our new coach is someone who truly cares for all his, for all his players, from giving rods to school to help them with their education, to giving players who are not as fortunate and live far away a ride home at the practice. To buying new cleats for the whole team and for players who did not have enough to buy the nice cleats or the latest cleats. One thing he would always do is keep his words. He has changed the culture for Elizabeth football and for the good, and is ready to win. He's someone who all the football players on the team look up to and are, are willing to go to battle for every Friday night and every Saturday morning. This coach is someone who has gave us all a new life and a new love for football. And I guarantee, this man has not a racist bone in his body. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Peddaway.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Dale Peddaway. I am a student athlete currently enrolled in AOF and a senior captain of the Elizabeth football team. This year, we were presented with a brand new coach, and so little time, this man has showed me and my teammates the variables of becoming good men and good fathers. The accusations of racism have stunned me because I am with him for long periods of time throughout the day and never felt that. Bringing most of his coaching, coaching staff over to Elizabeth, and most of them are black. And they have stuck with him through thick and thin. One of his assistant coaches of twelve years is black and his right-hand man. Therefore, I would like to say our new coach doesn't have a racist bone in his body, and I will continue to fight for my coach till the truth is out. The truth is that he is not racist, and me and my teammates will continue to come to board meetings till our coach is out in the right light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Henry Wilson.
Good morning, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on the character of Coach Fury. We all heard about the allegation and what he's been accused of. And I'm here to say, as a former player for Coach Fury and somebody who's worked with him over fifteen years now, I doubt and know for a fact that man has no ounce of racism in him. Nobody will ever do more for our student athletes than he will. He holds the student athletes to a higher standard than most will, and he does nothing but his very best for them in all situations. Many might not agree with him, many might not like him, but it does not make him racist. The fact that we need to address this is wrong. We should address what really happened. We should consider addressing what happened that day in question. How our student athletes were not properly being protected by what they had to see, what they had to witness. And it's also very disrespectful to the rest of the staff, who more than half of them are black, to say we all work for a racist coach. There's no way any of us will allow Coach Fury to disrespect any parent, disrespect any of our kids because of their color. Coach Fury is a great man, people might not agree with him, but he's gonna do things the way he see fit. He will always have the backs of all his players, no matter what, and he will always have the utmost respect for parents and how they raise their homes. It's okay to disagree with people, but we don't have to use a race card when we feel or think they're not being fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, we finish?
Yes, that was our last speaker.
Okay. Before I request a motion to go into private section, I want to say thank you to the community, and we will listen to your concerns. At this time, I conclude the public comment portion of this meeting. The president requests a motion to go into a private section to consider Marius Sec and the Open Public Meeting Act, especially for discussion, personal matters, specifically interviews and appointment. The board will recall in public and maybe take formal action. May I have a motion on second?
Motion to go into private.
I second that motion.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, Robocall.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Dorjeli.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pastana.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
There are additional items to be add to the agenda.
There are additional items to be up to the agenda.
Yes, we have three resolutions for appointment. Appointment of Supervisor of Special Services, Maria Ureco. Appointment of Vice Principal, Maria Sanchez. And Appointment of Vice Principal, Veronica Vega.
May I have a motion and second to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolutions.
I second that motion.
Second the motion.
The motion has been made on property second. Mr. Kennedy, Robo call please.
Barbosa.
Yes, congratulations.
Carvalho.
Yes, congratulations.
Shevres.
Yes, congratulations.
Dorjeli.
Yes, congrats.
Jacobs.
Yes, congratulations.
Neron.
Yes, congratulations and welcome.
Concalves Pastana.
Yes, congratulations.
Marina Ortega.
Yes, congratulations. I will now have our Superintendent of School share the community updates.
Good evening. We would like to begin by sharing our back-to-school video. I'd like special thanks to our IT department for the amazing job that they did putting this together. If we could showcase the video, or I can certainly showcase it towards the end of the presentation. Ah. If that does not motivate everyone, I don't know what does. That was incredible.
Thank you. Great presentation video.
Thank you again to our IT department. Thank you again to our board members for your time, for your dedication in being a part of that amazing day, September ninth, as we opened up our schools. Amazing. Now, we'd like to switch over to our announcements. Thank you. We're going to move to the next slide, please. So we would like to be able to share once again. Thank everyone for having joined us on welcoming our students and our families. As I stated, we opened our doors on September ninth to welcome our students, our team members, for the 2223 school year. And among those who went to visit, not only our Board of Education, but also our Elizabeth City Government, members of the Elizabeth Police Department, our administrators from Central Office, instructional coaches and coordinators from Central Office also, everyone in an effort to assist. And special thanks to all of our school administrators for making this day a success. Special thanks to all of our school personnel, our teachers, our custodians, our security guards, food service workers. It really was a true phenomenal experience and fantastic to be able to be back to normal. Next slide, please. So we'd like to be able to share with our community this evening that we, of course, we've been stressing our commitment to creating a safe and caring learning environment through the promotion of mental, physical, and social-emotional wellness. The New Jersey Legislature had passed a law beginning with the 2223 school year that requires public schools, students in grades seven through 12, have to have a student identification card that includes their telephone number for the New Jersey Suicide Prevention Hope Line, otherwise known as New Jersey Hope Line, and contact information for a crisis text line to be printed on the back of a student identification card. In the interest of providing our students with a broader spectrum of mental health resources at their fingertips, we've included the addiction, DCPMP, domestic violence, New Jersey, homeless, New Jersey, and national suicide prevention, poison control, and Union County crisis hotlines, as well as the Elizabeth Police Department phone number. Additionally, next slide, please. We have created a mental health initiatives webpage on the Elizabeth Public Schools website that offers details on some of the partnerships that we have with other organizations pertaining to mental health, as well as various programs and resources offered by the district. The Mental Health Initiatives page can be found, as you see on the screen before you, visiting wwwepsnj.org, clicking on Students and Families, drop-down menu tab, and selecting Mental Health Initiatives. I encourage our families to take advantage of these resources and maintain, to maintain your own mental health wellness by having regular check-ins, ongoing conversations with family members, friends, mentors, and all of in whom you confide. We recently shared this information as a letter to our community this past week. Next slide, please. So as we turn now to our offerings for this school year, I would like to be able to share we are utilizing our federal funding that was provided to our district. At the end of last year, we used it to be able to address the safe return to in-person and also, as a reminder, 20% of the federal funding supports learning loss activities that address social, emotional, and academic needs. The Elizabeth Public Schools received more than $64 million as part of the American Rescue Plan, of which $42.8 million and a reserve of nearly $21.4 million to be determined by the Department of Ed to be able to support the various challenges resulting from the pandemic. For our families, we will be sharing with you an after-school brochure. As you know, every year, we publish a summer school brochure, so our families are well-informed with regard to the various programs that are available. We're doing the same thing this year, so our families are informed with regard to programs that support academics, athletics, and the arts. Next slide, please. And I'd like to now turn to our Elizabeth Public Schools' promise goals, as well as a review of the New Jersey State Assessments, which is a requirement. We're going to begin with promised goals, class of 22. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, our promised goal number one, we are committed to having 100% of our graduates meet the requirements to enter a two- or four-year college, a technical school, or service to our nation, and/or hold a license or certificate enabling them to enter the workforce. From the data that you see before you on the slide, 65% of the graduating class of 2022 is planning to enroll in college or a technical school, and an additional 3% are joining a branch of the military. Next slide, please. 90% of our EPS graduates, as our second promise goal, will enroll in at least one AP course. And as you can see from the data on the slide before you, 56.8% of the class of 2022 took at least one AP course throughout their high school career. Next slide, please. While more than half of the graduating class of 2022 had a GPA of 3.0 or higher at graduation, the average GPA for the class of 2022 exceeded 3.0. Next slide, please. Last year, the New Jersey Department of Education was required to report two versions of the high school graduation rate. The state calculation includes all graduates from the cohort. The federal calculation requires students to be excluded from the graduation rate if they had an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan, that included modifications to or exemptions from meeting the course requirements, attendance requirements, or the state graduation assessment requirements. Next slide, please. These graduation rate calculations are preliminary. The official confirmed graduation rates will be available sometime in the month of November. But you're able to see from the slide before you with regard to the preliminary state calculation in the first column, so as a district projected 84.9%. And then you're able to see the individual academies based on our preliminary data, with the Bullwidge Finance Academy at 89.4%, our Frank J. Sicarrell Academy at 94.2%, our Duara Technology Academy at 74.7%, our Edison Career and Technical Academy at 81.9%, Halsey Academy at a 79.7%, our Hamilton Academy at 96.1%, and Jefferson at an 85.5%. And then you're able to see the preliminary federal calculation as indicated with regard to the requirement as it pertains to IEPs. Next slide, please. So here, we always share our trajectory. Over our high school graduation rate has increased by more than 25% over time since 2011. Let's turn to the next slide. And here you can see the progress by each high school academy. Next slide, please. So while our district rate has increased by 25%, our black population increased by nearly 35%, our Hispanic population by more than 24%, and our white population by 10%. Next slide, please. And as you can see here, we also see increases by gender. Next slide, please. And the same trend as it relates to economic status. Next slide, please. So now, as you are aware, students are required to pass an assessment as a requirement of the New Jersey Department of Education. There are several pathways available to students. The first pathway is to pass the state assessment. The second pathway includes a variety of substitute competency tests, including SAT, PSAT, ACT, as well as a comprehensive list of other assessments. The third pathway is to participate in the portfolio appeals process. There are 1,883 students who are in the 2022 cohort. Of them, 1,599 graduated. And as you can see on the bottom half of this slide, our students took advantage of these options that are available to them. It's important to note that the class of 2022 lost two opportunities to pass the state assessments when the administration of NJSLA was canceled due to COVID in 2020 and 2021. Next slide, please. So how did we perform on the state assessments this year? Next slide, please. So as you know, the federal and state regulations require all students to be assessed in elementary school, middle school, and high school. And as you can see from the slide before you, I have referenced for you the grade levels in which the various assessments are administered. Next slide, please. So when we look at our math performance by grade, by content, the blue bars, and you'll see this all throughout the presentation, the blue bars are our performance in Elizabeth, while the green bars are the performance across the state of New Jersey. So here, you're able to see the performance in mathematics by grade level and also by content. Let's move on to the next slide, please. This slide shows our performance by demographic group, including gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and population. Most students are reported in several categories. Next slide, please. Here you can see we perform much better in English Language Arts than math. In grades six and seven, we nearly matched the performance across the state, and our ninth graders exceeded the performance of the state as a whole. And here, you can see the ELA performance by demographics. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, we administer science assessments in grades five, eight, and 11 only. So you're able to see the comparison of the district performance versus the state average. And then, of course, you're able to see the science performance also reported by demographic group. Next slide, please. So we're now going to talk about access for our English language learners. My computer is not as fast as the screen. So in addition to the NJSLA, English language learners are also assessed on their English language acquisition with Access for Ls assessment. On this slide you see before you, the Access for Ls is administered to all of our English language learners from kindergarten all throughout high school. Students are assessed on four domains: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And all four domains are assessed. The Access for Ls is administered completely only for our students in grades four to 12. Next slide, please. Students are grouped in grade-level bands for the Access for Ls. So our kindergarten students take a paper-based interactive assessment that is administered. I'm sorry, kindergartners take a paper-based assessment. But interactive assessments are available for our students in grade one through third grade, and they are assessed in all domains with the exceptions of the area of writing. So because their typing skills are so limited because of their age, they use paper and pencil for the writing domain. The Access for Ls is administered completely only for students in grades four to 12. Next slide, please. And now we move into the Dynamic Learning Maps assessment. Our Dynamics Learning Maps is administered to the students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. In our district, less than 2% of the students participate in this assessment. It's the alternative assessment that's made available to our students for whom NJSLA would be inappropriate. Next slide, please. So like the NJSLA, it's administered to students in grades three to eight. However, at the high school level, students are only assessed in 11th grade. Next slide, please. Students are scored in four categories: emerging, approaching, and advanced. Students who are performing at target and advanced are considered to have passed the DLM. Because the state assessments were canceled in 2020 and 2021, we administered a DLM to students in grade 12 who had missed their opportunity when they were in grade 11. Next slide, please. And now you're able to see the data for the performance in mathematics. Next slide, please. And just as with NJSLA, only grades five, eight, and 11 are assessed in science. For the spring 2022 administration, our For the spring 2022 administration, our seniors were included as well. Next slide, please. So as you can see from the data that has been presented, the impact that COVID has had on our students. It is important that we talk about now the interventions that are provided to our students, and I will provide an overview of the information. Next slide, please. So this, all this information will not only be available on our website, but also our principals will be hosting parent academies in their respective schools so that our families have the opportunity to understand how students are being supported in language arts, in mathematics, and also in science. So here on the slide before you, you're able to see how we support our general education students. And you see the various either resources that are available in the form of supplemental programs or changes that we have made to the curriculum in order to address the areas that the students are deficient in. Next slide, please. We continue on with our interventions and supports for English Language Arts. And you see not only the resources, but you also see specifically what our professional development for our teachers is focused on. In addition to that, program opportunities such as Saturday intensification programs for our students, there's academic lunchtime tutoring as well in all of our schools, and of course instructional coaching to support our new teachers and priority schools based on student performance. Next slide, please. And now you see the supports for our English Language learners in a similar manner, not only curriculum updates, but also instructional resources as well as professional development opportunities for our educators. Next slide, please. On this slide, you're able to see not only how our department supports our teachers, but also the various professional development topics that are presented on an annual basis. Next slide, please. And now, as we continue with English Language learners, we not only reference the various programs that are available either after school or during our summer program, but also the various materials that have been purchased for our classrooms. Next slide, please. And now, in the same approach to support English Language Arts as we did with our general education and also with our English Language learners, you're able to see how our students with disabilities are supported, not only through curriculum work, but also in the form of resources as well as professional development days dedicated to our special ed educators. Next slide, please. And as we continue with our supports for our special ed teachers, you see on the slide before you the variety of professional development opportunities that are made available to our teachers every year. Next slide, please. And now we take the same approach with mathematics. From a curricular perspective, in terms of how we're supporting our English Language learners, to the specific professional development as a result of examining the data. Next slide, please. Again, now under mathematics, the approach that's taken to support our general education students. Once again, you're able to see a combination of curricular updates to assessments that have been designed for our students to program opportunities for students either after school and the summer. Let's move to the next slide, please. And same approach with our general education students. Next slide, please. Continue with the support for our English Language learners. Next slide. And of course, the supports provided for our special education students in the area of mathematics. Next slide, please. So you're able to see from a department support with regard to department meetings, with regard to training opportunities after school, to extracurricular programs, to also the various supplemental programs to support mathematics that have been incorporated. Next slide, please. And now we move to celebrating excellence in our schools, and I'm happy to share that we had 58 students in our district who earned a perfect score on the NJSLA assessment in 2022. Let's move to the next slide. So here you're able to see the 58 students in our district who earned the perfect scores on the NJSLA. And you'll see the total students who earned a perfect score, the number of students in each of the schools. Next slide, please. And, oh, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind, please, going back to the previous slide. So out of these 58 students, they represent not only language arts, but also language arts, mathematics, and science. And this data represents 15 different schools where students achieved a perfect score on the NJSLA. So now we're going to move to recognitions. Next slide, please. So take a moment for a few highlights. Let's move to the next slide. So Elizabeth Public Schools Director of Special Projects, Dr. Dorothy Hannigan McMullin, was recently appointed to the New Jersey State Special Education Advisory Council. The purpose of the advisory council is to provide guidance on special education and related services. By law, the council is charged with advising the Commissioner of Education on unmet educational needs of pupils with disabilities within the state, commenting publicly on the annual state program plan, proposed rules and regulations, procedures for distribution of funds with regard to the education of students with disabilities, assisting in the development of reporting such information. In addition to that, the opportunity for the council to be able to interact with the Commissioner of Education in performing the responsibilities related to students' education of pupils with disabilities. So special thanks to our director, Dr. McMullin, for this wonderful opportunity to be able to have a voice on the state panel as it relates to our students with disabilities. Let's move on to our next slide, please. So wonderful accomplishment that we received this, earlier this week, the Admiral William F. Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Program has designated a Naval Honor School by the Commanding General of the Marine Corps Training and Education Command. This designation was as a result of the hard work that was completed by our JROTC program in the 2122 school year. This marks the second time in three years that the MCJROTC at Admiral Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy has received this honor. Currently, there are 250 JROTC programs worldwide divided among four regions. Being designated a Naval Honor School means that a Marine Corps JROTC program is in the top 20% of all programs. The selection is based on several criteria, including the number of cadets that are active in school communities and clubs, the number of community service hours for the unit as a whole and per cadet, the number of organizations assisted by the unit, and scholastic achievement, including the number of academic awards and scholarships given to cadets. The units are also measured by participation in public affair events, community service, drill, color guard team competitions, marksmanship competitions, academic competitions, leadership camps, physical fitness team competitions, as well as field trips. Because of this prestigious status, we will have the opportunity to send nominations to the U.S. Naval Academy, U.S. Air Force Academy, and the Military Academy at West Point. The award also provides students who have a desire to join a service academy the significant advantage of earning recommendation letters from their senior marine JROTC instructor, who, where this communication essentially translates to a letter being issued by a U.S. representative or a senator. So for our students, that is, to have a recommendation letter from a senior marine JROTC instructor, represent a U.S. representative or a senator is truly remarkable, remarkable. So congratulations to our Halsey Academy, to our JROTC program. You never cease to amaze us with your accomplishments. Fantastic work. Our next slide, please. So the Katherine Johnson, Dorothy Vaughn, Mary Jackson STEM Academy was recently recognized this week as well, as Mr. Kennedy would say, breaking news, as a 2223 U.S. Microsoft incubator school. JVJ STEM Academy is among 30 schools across the United States and the only school from the Northeast region who are on a path to join the elite group of Microsoft Showcase Schools and over the course of the next year, and will have the opportunity to learn and grow best practices. Building on their decades of work with policymakers, school leaders, and educators around the world, Microsoft supports schools in the showcase school programs with resources and ideas that turn their vision into reality. Showcase schools create student-centered, immersive, and inclusive experience that inspire lifelong learning. The Microsoft Showcase Schools Program is an opportunity to engage with Microsoft and like-minded school leaders around the world using the education transformation framework that combines leadership and policy, teaching and learning, intelligent environments, and student and school success. So special congratulations to our JVJ STEM Academy, to the leadership, to all of the educators for their hard work and efforts and for this recognition. Fantastic work. Next slide, please. And this completes our announcements for the month of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your presentation. Now, Mr. Kennedy, we compare. Yes, this one. Mr. Kennedy, can you include this?
I have a couple of items.
Yes.
The first thing is, every year, the board affirms and acknowledges the Code of Ethics for the Board of Education annually. So if you may, if I may, I'd like to read the Code of Ethics, and you've all received a form tonight to sign off that you acknowledge your understanding of these codes. The members of the Board of Education recognize that they hold authority not as individuals, but as members of the board. In order to make a clear public statement of its philosophy of service to the students of the district, the board adopts this Code of Ethics. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational well-f served children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C, I will confirm my board, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will behave toward my fellow board members with the respect due their office, demonstrating courtesy, decorum, and fair play at all public meetings and in all public statements. E, I will refrain from inappropriate conduct in public meetings and in making public statements, refraining from any disparagement of my fellow board members or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious basis. F, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. G, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board. H, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. I, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. J, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrator. K, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. And L, I will perform all, I will refer all complaints to the chief school administrator and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. And as I said before, all board members received a form to sign off on your understanding of those.
Need us to make a motion? You need us to make a motion?
Nothing, just, we just affirm.
Acknowledge it.
Acknowledge the Code of Ethics. The second thing I have is a second reading of Board Policy 6142.10, Internet Safety and Technology, and there's a resolution included in tonight's agenda to adopt that. And the last thing I have to be added to the agenda is a resolution for a settlement agreement, JL, and a resolution for a prescription benefits contract amendment. So, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, thank you. Mr. Kennedy can leave up all the items, including the additional items to the agenda. Now, may I have a motion and a second to approve the entire agenda?
I make a motion to approve the entire agenda.
A second motion? The motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvalho.
Yes, with abstention in tab five, page three.
Yes.
Jacobs. Neron.
Yes, with the exception of tab fi, tab five, page three, tab four, B, pages two, three, and four.
Thank you. Goncalves Pastana.
Yes.
Moreno.
Mr. Kennedy, I think that Board Member Carvalho is back on.
I'm here, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, if you'd like to vote on the full agenda plus the additional items.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy, I vote yes with abstentions on tab two A, page four and eight, tab four B, two, three, four, and page, and tab five, page three.
Thank you. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
So the full agenda plus the additional items have passed.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn, will any of our board members like to speak?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
I want to invite the whole community to the Puerto Rican Porray, to his, this Sunday, September 25, at 1:00 p.m. in Elizabeth Avenue.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez, for the invitation. Any other commissioner who would like to speak?
Madam President.
Yes.
I just want to remind our special ed parents that we have a basketball clinic for grades three to five running beginning in October, so if they have any questions or didn't get to register, have them speak to their teacher or their CST team, and I'm sure that they'll accommodate. And I also just want to welcome our students and our teachers back to the school year.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to wish all of our security guards a happy Security Guard Appreciation Week. We appreciate all of your hard work and dedication for each and every one of our schools. Thank you.
Equa that, Madam President. Salute to our security guards who seldom get the thank you that they deserve for all the work that they got to do. They got their hands full, especially in today's climate and all the worries that we have in our society today. So thank you for. So thank you for doing what you do. We hear, we stand with you, and yeah, greater things to come.
Okay, I want to say the last comment. I want to say welcome everyone to our new school year. Welcome our teachers, parents, guardians, and I wish the best this year. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Tonight's meeting.
I second that motion.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, robo-call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Carvalho.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Chavez.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Dorjely.
Yes, good night.
Jacobs.
Yes, good evening.
Neron.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes, good night, everyone.
President Marina Ortega.
Yes.